I, the United States of America, in the republic of Georgia stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Julie.
Telosa Midway Board Mission Statement. Telosa Midway, in this school district, educates every student to be a lifetime learner, a person of integrity, and a positive contributor to society.
Thank you, Julie.
No one signed up?
No one signed up, please. So we'll move into the discussion action item agenda, discuss and consider recommendation in food service management contract of 2022, 2023. Ms. Cora?
All right. Call on Patrick Fernandez. Give us your report.
Good afternoon. So he's saying good evening, but it's good afternoon this time. Coming over the food service contract, I briefly gone over the summary, the whole process at the last board meeting. And packed up a summary in the thing. The committee met. We received the presentations. Again, the four companies that submitted were Airmark, SFE, Sedexo, and Tahir. And members in the audience, we have Airmark up front right here. We have a gentleman from SFE. Introduce yourself, please.
My name is Angelo Calado.
Airmark, go ahead and introduce yourselves. Rick Nunez.
Alicia Jordan McDonald.
Crystal Fletus.
Robert Johnson.
All right. And then we have Sedexo.
Eddie Noriega with Sedexo.
All right. In addition, we have some of our admin that was on the committee for the selection process. So we received all the packets. The committee team met through, went through all the packets. We did 45-minute presentations the day after we received the packet, and then the committee got together. They independently scored the companies, and they all came up with these, Sedexo is number one when they ranked them independently. We submitted the scores to TDA, and TDA said that the scores could not be, everyone had to have the same score. It's kind of puzzling. But so we had to create a rubric so that everybody could come up with the same score. Even going through the rubric, Sedexo still came up as the number one ranking. We resubmitted to TDA, and at that point, they accepted it, and we received our acceptance letter on the 9th. So at this point, we brought it to the recommendation. I know there were some questions about where we go from here in the transition. First of all, I wanted to make it clear that Telosa owns all the cafeteria equipment, with the exception of a couple of special, like he has a barbecue pit, chef has a barbecue pit grill. That is not owned by the district. But all the ovens, stoves, everything that's in the buildings is owned by Telosa Midway. All right? The other question was, what would happen to the employees? Because they've been members, you know, part of our family, TM family for years. Sedexo will, as promised, to hire them all back, with the exception of, of course, the ones that Airmark contracted, that are in the contract, we can't have those. But the employees will come back. In the RFP, we've requested that they get a pay raise, so they will all be receiving a raise and getting a couple of paid, extra paid holidays. So that, we're improving it for our employees. And again, they will all be retained. Those were the questions I had fielded, and I'm ready to field any questions you might have.
I guess I was looking at the committee that was formed, and I was wanting to know, since the complaint was that the parents were complaining about during the pandemic not having information on their food that was given on how to heat the food, and that was the complaint against Airmark. Why is it that we did not have any parents or students on the committee?
The committee has to be comprised of employees of the district. So that's why we went with the APs, the principals that work in the cafeteria.
And then my other question is, are we currently in a contract with Airmark? And if we are, how are we getting out of that contract?
The contract expires on June 30th.
Okay.
So this contract is a new contract. The contract with Airmark was only for one year.
Didn't we have four? What was the long-term contract renewed year by year? With Airmark?
It was initially, it was for, we approved it two years ago for one year with the addition, the option to approve it for four years. Four additional years.
Prior to that, wasn't it more than two years out like that?
It's been, I believe it's been four years for a while. A year plus four. They were trying to renew for four.
Year plus four.
However, when we went to rebid last year because of the problems that we had with the timeline, when we asked TDA if we could, if you could reject all the bids, we were allowed to reject, but we were required to rebid this year. That's why we had to go out for bid this year. They allowed us to continue with Airmark for one year.
So as, I'm sorry. So as of June the 30th, the contract's over?
That's correct.
And we have no obligation to Airmark after that?
No.
Okay. Another question I have was, on the employees, you said the gentleman's willing to hire them back. How long is that process going to take?
It should be a smooth transition.
Good afternoon. So as soon as this board approves it, we'll start that transition process. And the first thing is to meet with all the employees.
Another question. There won't be, I mean, I don't know if there's any, how the ranks work with the cafeteria staff or the employees at this point, but there won't be any, I hear you say that there will be pay raises, but there won't be any demotion or any kind of salary decrease for some reason or another?
Absolutely not. In fact, one of the things that has helped, because I think everyone knows from a pandemic standpoint, what's also happened with wages. So for us, it's important that those wages go up. That's a big factor in why employees stay. So.
Another question. Back when you initially went out, it was because people were not happy or whatever. And y'all took it upon yourselves to go out for an RFP, from what I understand. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this is a holdover from whenever y'all didn't accomplish what you wanted last time. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you also put in your information packet about how all the people made presentations, all the different food services at the time made presentations. What did Sedexo do for their presentation?
I'd have to refer, I was not allowed to be in the presentations. Sorry, I have to refer to one of the committee members.
Who was on the committee? What did Sedexo bring? What kind of presentation did they make?
All the presentations were pretty much the same as far as they gave a verbal presentation and brought PowerPoints.
No food demonstrations? I think everyone gave food demonstrations?
No, last year.
We decided against food presentations?
No, not this time, the last time.
Oh, last year?
Yes.
Yes, we did do food presentations last year.
What did Sedexo bring that time? What kind of presentation did they have? They brought SNJ. Everybody else had a food presentation. That's a lot of character there, I think, don't you?
Were there any site visits?
Not allowed to do the site visits for this one.
But you did a site visit for the previous one, right?
Yes, sir.
And why didn't you do a site visit for this one?
It's not a, not part of the RFP. In the way that the RFP is written now, you cannot use previous experience. We couldn't, we couldn't give Airmark any additional points for what they've done in the previous 41 years that they've been here. They've made it very clear that we go off what is presented in those binders. And that's what the committee has to go off of.
So just off someone saying they might do something for you?
Correct.
That if, no proof of what they've done?
We were not allowed.
Or any school district that's ever worked with them before?
Not allowed to look at that.
Or if they've ever worked for a school district in the area?
Yeah, that brings up. I completely agree. It is not your normal RFP process. It goes against procurement. I know that Airmark is challenging the process.
How did, I wasn't given the information about the SNJ. How was that surfaced to the board?
I'm not sure.
Really?
That was next year, don't you?
I don't, I don't remember that ever being on any of the connections. That's where I'm.
I don't either.
And the other part is, guys, we go by committee recommendation on everything in the district.
And you always say we shouldn't do that.
But today, you want to honor it.
Honor?
Well, I think my biggest concern is that it's the kids that eat the food.
Well, we had a rough start with Airmark as well. Nobody, we were throwing away 90% of our food when we started. Airmark did get better along the way, but we've gone through recommendations of a committee for everything that we do in this district, including the District of Innovation. So I mean, I'm trying to figure out where we're leading with this information.
I think we're leading anywhere. We're trying to get more information to make the right decision for our students here in this district. That's why we're discussing it.
We went through the RFP and everything else for over a year. I mean, obviously, it's been researched and brought to the committee. I mean, that's my biggest question. I mean, don't get me wrong. I mean, like I said, we've had our road. But at the same time, you know, through recommendations of the superintendents and the assistance here at the administrative office, we've worked through all of that.
Well, it requires a vote from the board, not a vote from the committee.
Yes.
Hey, I'm sorry, what did you say?
It requires a vote from the board, not a vote from the committee.
Well, I understand. Well, that's right. That's something that happens when we bunch in our teachers. But, and everything else that we've done. Again, like I said, you know, again, we've taken the recommendation of the committee as being the board. And I think that was mentioned in prior board meetings. So I mean, I'm just, I mean, the fact of the SNJ and everything else, I mean, I never heard about that one, but there again, some board members are privileged to other things, I guess.
It was taught, it was mentioned.
It was never mentioned.
Yes, it was.
Well, if it wasn't mentioned in open forum, let's go back to the tapes and find it. Can you put it against those brought up?
Okay, that's, that's, now you get started.
Were any of these complaints about the food brought to the board?
Exactly.
No, they were not?
The kids, a couple of years ago, brought big complaints to this board. And then we worked with Airmark, and we got them fixed.
Okay.
So, so I mean, we're dating back. You've got to go back to throughout the whole.
Was there a complaint this year about the food?
Was there?
No, there was not.
Was there a taste test this year, Noel?
Has anybody ever been to this other cafeteria and had any food there? No?
Patrick, I have a question. If the rubric ended up that everyone had to have the same score, is that what you said earlier?
Yes.
So what differentiated between that? How did they still come?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I don't understand that part. Their presentation.
Actually, the only area that they allowed us to do a little bit of difference was in the student management, student engagement section. That's our one copy. So we were able to break out student engagement into a rubric, and then they were able to determine on that.
So how did you determine who to go with if everybody was given the same? That's my question.
Okay, so the price-wise was the first indicator. The scale of the price, that breaks down everybody. And Tahir came out first in the price. All right? The only other area, and you can see in the judging, that had a real difference was the student management section.
Is there any chance we can get something?
Yeah, I think everybody should be able to see this information.
Yeah, because we're talking about something that only two board members are looking at.
Well, hang on, we'll make.
Is this going to change the price for students?
We've already adjusted the price for students. You voted in the, I believe, was it the January and February?
Yeah, but those prices are going to remain the same?
Those prices remain the same. That's what they have to bid on. We had to adjust our prices so they could bid on those prices for this contract. So that won't change.
How do those prices come about when they've been free for four years?
They're based on the, TDA comes out with the guideline on what they should be, and we should match USDA. We're way below it, and Phillips has been increasing it. Every, every year, we take a small increase to the board.
I guess, Patrick, I'm very disappointed that this has been a whole year. We've been, we were here a year ago. And we haven't had any complaints with Airmark this year. We weren't told y'all were going to think about going out?
We were required to go out. Last year, that wasn't an option. I mean.
Okay, so what are options now? What I read in the order is.
We could either go with Sedexo, or we could self-opt.
Okay, so what happened to Airmark in the four-year contract that's optional?
Okay, so last year, when we terminated the process, TDA sent us a letter that we could renew for one year, but we had to rebid this year. So that Noel voided the other contract.
And we were told that?
Yes.
And if we opt out, what does that mean exactly?
That means we will hire, we will, as a district, we will have to go find a food service manager that's certified in child nutrition. All the cafeteria employees, which is about 31, 32 employees, we would have to hire them. And we would start doing our own cafeteria service. We wouldn't have a food service company.
So I've got two questions. How many districts does Sedesco have in Region 2?
In Region 2?
We have, so Calhoun County is here. We, Florisville, we do schools. Waco, it's a large school district. Keller.
I said Region 2.
I can get you that list specifically.
I'm privy to that.
Just in one of the things I will say, Sedexo is a very large company. We're the largest company that bid on this process, so we're not an inexperienced company. And we certainly be willing to do food demonstrations for this board or site visits.
Where's your closest office?
Calhoun County is our closest district, but we have our office in Dallas.
In Dallas?
Yes. We, the district manager, Jenna Holland, actually lives 10 minutes from here. So she's very local. She's a local.
And she works in Dallas?
No, she lives here, she works here.
So technically, her office is here. She works out of home?
Yes, she works out of, yes, sir.
So her office is here?
Correct.
It's interesting. Marketing posters, signs on this ranking sheet. The difference is there. I see marketing things and some of the stuff our current food service has done.
That's correct.
Why did they get a zero?
I have to refer to the committee.
Was they not given the information?
I mean, did they go to wherever? I mean, how would they know these other people are marketing anything?
Yeah.
Oh, it's just in a presentation? Okay. But you've never been to their site to see if they're marketing anything at all?
See, you don't know, but we know about here.
Did everybody know the criteria? All of these people that posed a bid, did they know what the criteria was that we were looking at?
They knew the overall rubric on the other page you have, on the second page, the score and scale.
But this criteria was created because y'all had to grade everybody the same, correct?
That is correct.
So they wouldn't have known this criteria?
They wouldn't have known that criteria.
Because this was done.
They had to submit something for student engagement, and each binder has a section on student engagement.
Let me ask you something, Patrick. Is it still an option at this point to stay with Airmark?
No.
Well, if there's no option there, what are we doing here arguing for Airmark? If that's not an option?
I'm sure there's an emergency option you can file for.
Well, he just said that the option is for us to do ourselves.
There's always an emergency option to fill out piece of paper and turn it into the government.
Well, that's not your option, correct? I mean, if he could just wait for his turn. The option is to either hire this company or do it ourselves. That's, those are the two options.
That's what TDA.
That's what we should be constantly creating.
So TDA is trying, is telling this local board that we have to do something?
What does it say?
Maybe now's a good time to sell off.
I'm sure there's an emergency option that they can turn in paperwork and get that taken care of.
I can contact them and see if they'll consider.
It's like there's an emergency option for COVID. There's an emergency option for everything.
Well, we haven't taken a vote yet, so that's him speaking. But as far as right now, you don't have that option to file an emergency. That wasn't one of your options. Your option is to go with this new company or go on our own. Are we, are we prepared to go on our own and hire an intritionist for all the campuses? Are we, are we prepared to do that?
It's a very short turnaround.
We start in July.
And we're picking up staff. The advantage to go into a food service management company is their buying power. They can procure food at a cheaper rate than us.
Yeah, what are we going to, you should be invited?
Quite every single one of them provided a guaranteed rate of return. If we do self-opt, we do not have that choice. Is it impossible to do self-opt? It is not. Cal Allen, Flower Bluff, for two districts comparable to ours, I'm they self-opt.
Let's reverse the question. How many, everybody recognize an Airmark employee? How many school districts are y'all still serving in Region 2?
Seven.
Seven? How many did you start off with, say, four years ago?
Eight.
Eight, so you lost one eight years ago?
We lost one a couple of years ago.
So you gradually have lost a school district, at least one every year?
No, how long?
Well, I've been here 12 years.
I've been here 32 years.
Okay, well, I've been here 12.
I have too.
So, I mean, it seems like at one time when I, I remember being on the board, y'all had almost everybody in Region 2. So you're down to seven.
Other people don't have anybody in Region 2.
I think.
And then, of course, we've always, we've always talked about the, about the opportunity to go and self, but we've always, we've been recommended by Dr. Nelson, Rodney, Ricardo, everybody else that was involved, that with our, with our school scheduling, it was hard to get into. And even Patrick, yourself, you've been involved in some of those conversations. So.
If we go with the company that we have the bid out for, how long of a contract is it going to be? It's a one-year contract?
And we have to go to the board to renew for each, for up to four years.
Okay. I think my biggest thing is, we don't eat the food at the school. I mean, unless someone just wants to go up and have lunch there. I think my biggest thing is the kids need to be involved on every campus, and from elementary to high school, they need to give you opinions on the food because they're the ones that eat it. And they'll have big opinions on what they're eating because they sit at our dinner tables every night and tell us what they think about our food. So they're the ones that really need to be making the decisions on what they're eating. So it's disappointing that the state of Texas is saying, here's these pamphlets right here, and here's these books you can go through and figure out how food tastes in a book. That's extremely disappointing because you can't eat the book. So, I mean, we do need to figure out what we're going to do because school is about to start. School is ending, school is going to start. And we have to feed the kids. And so we need to figure out what we're going to do.
I agree with you. I think we should just get rid of all the committees and let everything come to the board so that we can get kids involved in our board meetings. And that gets rid of all of our committees, including the hiring process and everything else that we do.
I mean, because, and honesty, the people that were on the committee, and y'all, y'all say, do y'all eat the food in the cafeteria on a daily basis? Have you eaten everything that they have sent out to our kids?
We do not, but I can say I'm in there pretty much every day watching what the kids eat. And I do have an understanding for what they eat, what is served. And I do have children in the district as well.
Mrs. Bo, I work at the Academic Career Center, and I can tell you that I'm involved with the process of intake for breakfast in the morning along with our custodian and food manager, and also at lunch. So we are able to, you know, we're a small campus, so we hear the students and their thoughts.
Okay.
And I also, at the primary, I'm in the lunch shift, so I can see what the kids eat and don't eat. I have a child at the intermediate, a child at the middle school, I have a child at the intermediate, a child at the middle school, a child at the high school, and I see what's at the primary.
I mean, I have kids on campus also, but they take their food every day. Um, so they, they, they don't eat in the cafeteria.
My kids, um, I.
That, that's troubling because they don't eat their lunch food.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying. So I, I can't give you an opinion from my students that are on campus.
Obviously, they don't like it if they take lunch.
Of the price, uh, what they want to take is sometimes a lot more than what it would be when they were on a paid, um, thing. But they, they are eating at school, uh, when they choose to eat what is there. So they, we don't pack lunches for them. Um, every now and then they will pack a lunch on their own, but most of the time they, they get the cafeteria food.
And sometimes choices from kids are they just don't eat that kind of food, um, that's being served. And then on other days, of course, everybody's going to eat on hamburger day, if there is a hamburger day, because everybody likes hamburgers. Pizza day, everybody likes pizza, but if you're going to serve a chicken breast, you're probably going to have kids turn their nose up at it. But, um, I, I'm just saying that we need to get kids involved. And, and they need to, they need to be telling us exactly what they like and what they don't like and see if we can work towards, um, making everybody happy.
Isn't it kind of late though?
It is for this one. It is for this one.
It's not part of the process. I mean, the bottom line is you build the committee to the standards that was required.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't.
What's troubling to me, excuse me, you three, right, John? Is that TDA requires you, everybody have the same score. That forces people to rethink what they had. I'm still troubled about the zeros. Or something that people should have seen.
That's what I was looking at. It looks like the committee either gave them all or nothing.
I mean, that's the whole thing. You get it from a book, maybe it wasn't. You read properly or something, but people can see it. I've seen it. High schools and different cafeterias.
But they didn't see that. All they're looking at these books.
I know, that's what I mean.
Just judged on the book.
At the books.
But if you look at the scores, they're all the same with Airmark and Sodexo until you get to the two of electronic marketing and marketing. Posters are zero.
Which is troubling. That means nobody.
They would have graded those somewhat, that score would have been a lot different at the end.
Are they not in your book that you'll have electronic marketing?
It is.
And you'll have marketing posters and signs in your book?
Yes, sir. There's a whole section designated to it.
So, somebody overlooked something?
That would be the committee.
So, obviously, it sounds to me like the board wants to go self-opt. We did it with our, we did it with our maintenance team. How fast can we get them? And I see our new superintendent's in the, in the back of the room. So how fast can we get, uh, uh, self-opt?
We don't have a choice. If you vote for that, we have to be ready to serve kids on June the ninth or twelfth.
We have to make baloney sandwiches that are being served. How fast do we get? How fast would it take for us to keep the credibility of our, of our committees as well as getting the kids fed come, come Ju-, or July 17th? Or whatever the first day of school is.
The very first challenge would be to go find a new service director.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm just realistically looking at the calendar. We're talking six weeks. We're having trouble filling teacher positions.
So, I know, I know, but you have option one or option two?
I understand.
There's not an option three. So option one says we take the, do it the recommendation. Option two says we do it ourselves. And option three says you hope that there's an emergency order and the wishfulness, and the wishing well. But either way, come the first day of school, we got to feed kids.
Yes, we have to feed kids.
That's the main thing. Another troubling thing is the TDA is telling a local entity what they have to do. That's troubling.
I understand that, sir.
Well, we can get ahead of them next year by forming student committees and letting them have a voice to go to the, the other committee so that we can do it the way the state of Texas needs us to do it. And we get the kids involved at the same time.
Well, the state would have to allow you to get the kids involved. There's guidelines. You can't just do it and go tell the, the state what you're going to do. The state has the guidelines to do that and it doesn't allow for kids.
When I asked if we could use previous history, we could only use what was in the binders.
But we can't have student committees during the year giving us updates on the food?
So, say we had committees this past year, then you're, according to TA, then we're putting input for, where Airmark would have an advantage because they would be putting input in for, for, that, they would have an advantage that the other companies wouldn't have.
So we send out surveys?
We'd have to survey all the, the, I guess, all the, all the committees. So we'd have to send committee or surveys to where all these companies have districts at.
Could we, almost along the lines of what Stephen said, could we go to TA, keep TDA and request that we have a kid, our kids, uh, a kid committee?
I really think the whole process is going to change for next year because, uh, along with Airmark, there, there's other companies pushing, uh, to re, to realign us. They're pushing to the USDA, uh, to get this realigned. Because it really, it should be an individual score, not a mass score that everyone has to match. And I know we're not the only district that's going through this. I've talked to a couple of other districts. Uh, in fact, well, we've shared our rubric with a couple of other districts, uh, to help them get that, get their, uh, their, uh, contract passed.
So what's our bottom line today?
Two options.
Yeah, to opt out or go with Sodexo.
I, I, I have a problem with it. I mean, you know, yeah, we have a committee and everything goes, but if they didn't score it or didn't see it or overlooked it, or if it was the last book they looked at by the time they got through with the binders and everything, that's, that's troubling that it was obvious and they didn't find it in the books. Two of them. That's, uh, SFE and Airmark and Tihar. But they found it on, uh, Max and Sodexo. It's, it's, it's amazing that they didn't see it if it was in the book. I mean, that troubles me that, you know, a zero does not look good. It could be a one or something or two, but a zero means that they didn't pay attention to it. Excuse me, committee, but that's, that's my opinion. It means they either overlooked it or just didn't consider it at all for some reason or another. That's, that's not, that's not appropriate to have put a zero if it was in, if the information was in there, especially on three of the five. You know, that, that's, that throws a big red flag right there. Yes, Ben, go ahead.
Mr. Cora, what's your recommendation on this?
She wrote it down.
Well, I know, but what, what do you, I mean, do you have any other say on this?
Well, my recommendation is that we go with Sodexo. In the beginning, uh, the committee was scoring them independently. And we didn't really talk about what we were finding. And then, uh, we turned in our, our sheets and whoever took them and was scoring them together said that Sodexo was the clear winner. And then, uh, he submitted the report to TDA. And they said, oh, you've turned in all these different sheets that have different numbers on them. We want you to have sheets with the same numbers. That seemed strange to us, but TDA is the one calling the shots. So then we had to go back and look at them and, and change so that we all had one response.
May I ask to see the electronic? Can I see the? May I look in that book and see the posters that were, for Airmark that were zero?
Patrick, when's this paperwork due?
Uh, we have to renew, um, as quickly as possible.
When, when's the date?
Uh, I had to get with TDA, I would say the end of May, so I guess we're coming up.
I have no idea what section it would be in.
So into May?
Yeah, so we're, this week, we'd have to probably reconvene this week.
And what if we don't, uh, get a vote? What happens?
It automatically defaults to self-opt.
I have a question.
That, that, that's troubling at the state of Texas.
So, so let me ask you. I, I have, I have a question, I have a question for this. When you first, before the rubric, Patrick, and you were individually scoring, was the electronic and the marketing on that, on those grading things?
No, it was just titled student management or student engagement was the title for that section.
So you, so you independently ranked students by what the, what the committee was seeing or, or hearing? But there was no food allowance, right? Just to be fair to the board, right? So there was just a presentation that was given? Okay. So. So my question is if these two things weren't in the first one and, and this company, I'm, I'm sorry, but Sodexo?
Sodexo.
Sodexo. They still came out in the very first grading system that was put out to our committee without those two items. They still came out as the leading company.
That's correct.
Then the state set for us to realign it, redo it. These two numbers do come up, it seems like on three out of the four companies. And, but they still came out on top, even if they, I mean, it could have come out as a tie maybe. I mean, and, and the same token, but the committee's still requested this other company. Right?
Yes, sir.
So it seems like it's been, it's been presented to the board as, you know, they want to try something new.
Yeah.
That was, that was the committee. I give you my personal, my, as, as assistant superintendent for operations. Any of these three companies, Airmark, Sodexo, or SFE, I'd be fine if they were recommended. I couldn't recommend Tihar because they would not release their financials unless they were picked. So to me, they're hiding something, all right? The, the three companies, uh, uh, they're huge companies. They, they, they manage, my nephew eats FSC down in the valley. So I kind of got my perspective from the valley. Uh, a couple of districts here locally use it. Again, any of those three, uh, I had no problem with. Uh, Airmark, we had our issues with them. Uh, they made leaps and bounds this year. Uh, Crystal's been a huge improvement to our district in, as far as communications. We didn't have that with the previous director. She emails me almost daily, texts any issues, and we're on top of it getting it together. It's reciprocal. Any issues I have, we had an issue with spoiled milk last week. Uh, she immediately took care of it. They pulled the milk from the high school. She got with the delivery service. So that I, the, we did not have that before. That has stepped up. I cannot, I could not be in the process. I reached out to them. Um, from what I heard in talking to people at the campuses and stuff, Airmark really stepped it up at the high schools. Uh, Chef Robert, his, his pasta, the, the, uh, the boneless wings, top notch. The kids love that stuff. Unfortunately, that didn't transition down to the other campuses. We weren't seeing that at the middle school, the, the primary, the intermediate. And I think that's why we had a committee that wanted to go otherwise. What the height, the treatment the high school was getting, the other campuses were lacking. And that's what I think the committee is hoping to get from Sodexo.
That's not what it says in this first statement. This is based on 2019 and 2020, the way the presentation of the curmudgeon food. That is what is said.
That is how that got us to rebid last year. That, that's.
This is this year, this is this.
Yes, ma'am. But that's why we, going back to that, that's why we did it last year. And that's what put us in this boat that we had to rebid this year.
It's still troubling, back to what John was saying. If you take, you know, three of the four had zeros for electronic marketing, marketing posters, signs, but Sodexo did. That's still, to me, is suspicious because it's a big red flag. Because if you take those last two off of Sodexo, they scored 13.
Okay. But John also said that the first survey, just don't forget that part. The first survey, the committee still had this company in the lead. I understand this cubic, but I'm still saying, in, 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 blind by the fact that we put a group of teachers together and took them out of their day to do all of this for this recommendation. Is it, the committee just consisted, the, the three people?
No.
How many people are in the committee?
Mr. Cora, uh, Chrissy, and Gay, and Mr. Edita from intermediate.
Well, regardless, we, we have to make a decision because we've got to feed children in July. So, um.
I, I hear, um, the older board members wanting to stay with Airmark. I don't have a problem with Airmark, but that's not our option, is it?
Yes, sir.
So why are we still beating on that option? Trying to get to the end of the line? If we have a no vote, we start the self-opt. We start the self-opt. I mean, that's.
Double confirm with T.
Well, you could, you'd have, you know, you got a few minutes to do that.
Then I suggest we table this.
Yeah, until you confirm that we can go back to the, where we were.
Well, then, then I, then I move that this meeting's, are held at night after seven o'clock. Because me leaving work for this stuff about not making the motion, this is crazy. We, we, we've been facing with this thing year after year. We went from giving them four years straits to four year every year. Obviously, that shows Mr. Rick 30 something years, but y'all ended up with some problems that we had to put y'all year by year. Whatever glamorous thing has happened in the high school, I can tell you, I had two daughters that went through the high school myself. It was always a question about what the teachers ate compared to what the, what the students ate. We left that alone. I never brought their issues to this board. However, we, we have to make these meetings at night when everybody's available. Because this is crazy. We're, we're sitting here for this meeting and we're going to table something that has been on the, on the, on the subject for over a year. Not only that, it's a step in the face to the committee. Exactly. I mean, these people have taken the time to do their research and now because, you know, two, three people say no, you know, now their recommendation is not worthy. And not, and not only that, you're going to prolong it longer and our date is going to get shorter, Kim. So go ahead and table it, but I'm not going to vote for the table.
Suggesting that you allow me a five-minute recess and I can contact Mr. Mitra.
We have a two o'clock?
Yes. I'm just asking for five minutes to try and reach out to TDA.
Do that.
Could we go into closed session for the personnel issue while he's on the phone?
Yes. Board convening closed meeting is authorized by Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Department Code 551. Possible to discuss a full certified non-certified personnel, 551.074. If a closed session item requires action, the board should take such action from late meeting and open session, 551.102. Certified to the closed sessions maintained, 551.103. And the items are posted and disclosed to the courtants for the law, 551.104. It is 1:42 PM, March 23rd, 2022. We're in closed session. 1:53 PM, May 23rd, 2022. We're back in open session, Mr. Cora.
It is recommended that the board of trustees issue a contract for the educator probationary and non-chapter 21 contracts for the 22, 23 school year as presented on the attached list.
And motion administrator recommendation?
No, sir.
Well, Ben, Jan, and I tell you, I prefer this.
No, Jan, Jan.
Ben, motion Jan second. Okay. Comments, questions? Very good. Eddie Teachers. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we're back in open session, uh, Patrick.
You want to be tabled? Uh, apparently your TDA is having a conference. Our two representatives are at the conference right now. I even reached out to our representative at the service center to see if I could get a ruling from her. But she's at the conference also. So we will have to table it and, and get back. No votes responded to it.
I would like to make, I mean, I would like to let the board know that I don't think tabling it should be an option right now. We have got to feed these kids in July. And, um, as hard as it has been to fill our teacher positions, we have to get a manager. I, I think we need to do what's right right now with the options that we have because it's all we have. And we need to work on doing a better job next year so that we, we, the board is aware of their options and the board is more, um, a part of what's going on because this is a one-year contract. We need to start in December or January dealing with, um, the food contract and, um, trying to take care of that then instead of this being, um, last minute again.
Arsenal warning is out for next year too.
True.
Depending upon, I agree with what she's saying. We have to have some food service for our kids, but under duress, I think this was, uh, not well thought out process by the TDA. The scoring mechanism is flawed. Because that would, that should have sent up red flags when you saw zeros on there. I mean, three of the four had numbers and the other three had zeros. That, that's not right. Because even if it, they knew it, apparently it's like they didn't even know it was in there. It weren't made aware of it, whatever. And the whole thing is zero. That means that they either didn't look at it, overlooked it, or didn't know about it. And they just put a number down. That, that's a faulty grading system. That, that's incorrect and everything, you know? And all of a sudden, this one company got all this stuff. I agree that we need to, you know, have our in place to feed the kids. And like I said, this is under duress. I think it's faulty. I think it's not well thought out. And I oppose the TDA telling the local men to do what they have to do. That is improper. And incurring with what Kim said, this process needs to be made more, some people's words, transparent because it really wasn't. So, that's, that's what I've got to say. I, I just, I disagree with it, but since TDA only gave us two options, which I oppose, that's, that's it's improper in and of itself.
I just think it's too late to opt out and put our district in that kind of a bind and not be able to feed our kids in July. So, and my motion to the board is that we, we move forward with Sodexo and that also we start now thinking about what we're going to do in a year and make sure that we know what all the rules are so that we can follow them correctly, but make sure that we get our students involved to eat the food. And also our committee able to give us their opinions on what happens for the next year. But us opting out right now, I think, is going to put our district in a bind that would not be good for our district at this time.
I don't think we have to opt out. I think we can go back and sign a one-year contract with them. Just do an extension, just emergency extension. Uh, I'm sure that's done constantly. If that's not, that'd be the easiest, quickest thing to do, whether than bringing in another company that you have no idea what they're going to do. They're not even from this area or even have a school down in this area.
Well, I'd like to thank the committee that took their time to, to go in through all of this. And, and I think that because of the options that were left, I think that, I think that we either go with the recommendation or opt out. And, you know, this is the way it is. So I think if we're going to move forward, I think we need to go ahead and go to vote. I'd like to call, I'd like to call the vote if we, we can do that.
We have to have administrative recommendation.
It is the recommendation, it is the recommendation that the school board approves Sodexo as the selected food service management company for the 22, 23 school year with the option to renew the contract for four additional years.
Person. One second.
I made motion, Ben seconded, any comments? Comment I just made still stands. The process was flawed. The grading process was flawed. That's not on the committee's part, but, uh, TDA is what it said it had to be all the same. The scores had to be the same. So that throws a wrench in it. And then the zeros are red flags. Should have been brought to people's attention. And no, self-opting would not be an option because there's not enough time. And the delay, and all of a sudden, here it is, the last of May that this is being brought. And we start in July. That's a little suspect in and of itself. I know the government works slow and they have a bunch of crazy things they have to do. But like I said, anything I do would be under duress due to state and the grading process. Any other comments?
My motion, we tabled this vote.
You have to go first.
We have to do that. There's, if you're trying to say an amendment to the.
Amendment to the motion.
Amendment to the motion. Okay. So, make you aware that we would have to vote on the amendment to table this later date. That would get more information. Is that what you're saying or what?
We only have till the end of May to make a decision?
I believe so, but again, I have to reach out to TDA. But we're shorting ourselves to less than 30 days if we extend it anymore.
They're not going to do anything anyway? They're not going to do anything anyway?
Okay, so make an amendment to the first recommendation is to table it. All those in favor of tabling? Future date?
You have a second?
Oh, we don't, yeah, we got a second.
Second amendment?
Yeah, all those, on the amendment to for tabling, all those in favor of tabling until we get more information, till.
Verification on that.
Yeah. What can be done?
Which is going to require another meeting, correct?
Correct.
At least so, yes. Okay, all those in favor of tabling it? Okay, those opposed to tabling it? Okay. Now, back to the original. The amendment did not pass back to the original for the motion to accept Sedexo. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries four, three. Okay. Mr. Cora, is there any further business?
No, sir.
There's no further business. Entertained a motion to end this portion of the meeting. Jan, first, seconded. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. It is 2:03 PM.
I don't think that was fair at all.
It's May 23rd, 2022.
We're in hold.